We'll move right on to the Urbana City Council meeting for Monday, June 27th, 2022. As soon as the clerk gives me the sign. Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meetings of June 6th, 2022, which was a special meeting, June 13th, 2022. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Mary Alice. I'll give this one to Chandra. Will all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public input and presentations. We have no presentations scheduled for tonight, but we will be taking public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes, up to five minutes, to speak.
I'm Tracy. First off all, I would like to comment on the quality of the live stream. So I've been trying to watch City Council for the past few weeks, and last week at around 6:50 PM, the live stream cut off, and viewers from home could not watch the meeting. This is not the first time, as this has happened before. I tried refreshing the feed several times and still could not watch the meeting. Also, the audio is pretty bad. If I have, if I, even if I turn on the audio of Vimeo, I think, the live stream to the maximum, and my computer volume to the maximum, if I have my AC on, I just cannot make out what you guys are saying. So I think this has been a problem, and I've, I know other people are having the same problems, so can we please address this issue so that we can at least watch it from home? The second thing is, has City Council forgotten about discussing the possibility of having remote public input via Zoom during in-person meetings? Is this another example of how you guys do not want to do something? And now that you cannot hide behind the excuses of legality, it is just easier for you guys to pretend that this is not an issue and to not discuss it? And also, since it was brought up that you, using Zoom, and only Zoom opens up the avenue of attacks using racial slurs, I would, actually, I'm really curious, I would actually like to know when these incidents have happened. As far as I know, and I watch City Council a lot, the only incidents of such language being used at a Urbana City Council meeting was on June 1st, 2020. And this was when an unknown person Zoom bombed, Zoom bombed our meeting. And this was at the very early start of the pandemic, and the city's IT team very quickly and very efficiently took measures to make sure that this does not happen again. So from then on, as far as I know, no such Zoom bombings or incidents where an unknown individual uses racial slurs to attack council members has happened. So yeah, please explain if such incidents have happened and I'm unaware of it. And really, is this a logical reason to not allow public input via Zoom, especially since our IT department has very efficiently addressed the problem? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council?
I'm supposed to state my, you guys hear, you guys can hear me, okay. I guess I'm supposed to state my name for the record. My name is Deborah Liu. I'm resident of Ward 3, Councilwoman Hersi's Ward. Thanks for the Council for hearing me during public input. I guess my commentary, I apologize, I didn't prepare any comment, I didn't prepare my comments formally, and I also didn't have a chance to review the previous discussion the Council's had on the specific issue. But I wanted to talk generally about the capital improvement plan. It caught my eye as I was perusing the budget and also the capital improvement plan, that the city does not have enough money, right, to cover, to cover its maintenance obligations, specifically in regards to pavement. This is, this is not a, this is not a surprise, this is not a secret. It's been talked about, it's been talked about for a long time as an issue that the city has. And for members of the public that may not be aware, for members of the Council that may not be aware, this is not an issue unique to the city of Urbana. It's not in any way a city even unique to small-town America, right? Every city has this issue. Every city that picked up a specific mode of development post-World War II has this issue. The specific issue is that you take federal money, you take state money for new construction, you build out these suburbs, you build out this development, and you take on these unfunded maintenance obligations in 20 years, because the federal government doesn't fund, doesn't cover maintenance, right? These grants are, they're always written for flashy new construction, but they're not written for maintenance. There's no-
Hey, Deborah, can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. I'll summarize what I've been saying, which is that-
Much better.
-the federal government gives you money to build new stuff, but then they don't give you money to maintain it, right? This is not a problem unique to Urbana. This specific issue has been, is being experienced currently, right, all across America. And there's a specific analysis by an individual named Charles Marone. He runs an organization called Strong Towns. And he did an analysis, and he and his team did this analysis where he, you project out the maintenance obligations of a town, and you look at the property taxes coming back, or the property and the sales tax coming back in, right? In every single town, it's in the red, right, like, across the board. Like, I think there are two exceptions, and one of them is New York City, right? So the only, the only way this is sustainable, right, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, is density. Single-family zoning is fundamentally like an unsustainable financial mode. And obviously, this is a nuanced issue, and there's a lot more to talk about than just the financial element of it. But strictly speaking from a financial sustainability perspective, single-family zoning is fundamentally unsustainable, right? There's just no way to make the math work. You look at the property taxes you bring in, you look at how much it costs to maintain that infrastructure, it's never going to balance out. And unless you're able to, you know, keep yourself afloat by hiring a bunch of very talented grant writers, it just doesn't work. And, you know, I have great confidence in the, in the ingenuity of this Council and of city staff. I have great confidence in the fundamental ability of the individuals who've been running the city to run the city. And I, I mean, you acknowledge the problem, right? You see the problem. It's right in front of you. But it's not like, it's, it's not something that you're going to be able to solve, because no small town in America has been able to solve it. Anyways, I'm starting to ramble, but there is only one solution, and that solution is density. I'm happy to talk more about it if you like, but I see I'm running down on my minutes. So, I mean, it's a little late to talk about the capital improvement plan, and again, I apologize for not coming to you earlier, but the mode that you've been running in, the mode the city's been running in, and the mode the city's been running in for the last 50 years, is just like, it's, it's, the math, the math has never worked, and it's never going to work, unless something changes, right? I don't, I don't think it's a reasonable solution to say, we're going to do what we've been doing, we're just going to do it better. So yeah, anyways, that concludes my public comments. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, thank you. That concludes public input. We'll move on to Council input and communications. Any comments from the City Council? You'll have three minutes. Grace?
Thank you. Thank you to members of the public for giving your feedback tonight. As far as tech issues, I appreciate bringing up the issues, because we obviously can't hear what's happening while it's being livestreamed. When I've listened afterward, they sounded fine, and I understand that the livestream has some issues, and I think that staff and the executive is aware of that, and my understanding is that IT is working on that issue, and hopefully with some new technology coming up, that that will also be resolved. I also had the understanding that we will have a discussion on hybrid input that I'm still looking forward to having. And then I also want to remind the public that tomorrow is voting day for the general primaries. There's some great information on the Champagne County Clerk website and votchampagne.org to look up the candidates, and encourage everyone to have a reminder for voting tomorrow. Thank you.
Any other Council comments? James?
Hi, yes, thank you. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank Deborah for coming out and speaking. I have a constituent, Tommy McElrath, who pointed me towards your article and smiled politely about the Florida Avenue corridor, and I did want to say a few things about that. I, I am a person, I noticed that the individuals working on that project noted some of my concerns about the eastbound intersection at Florida and Lincoln Avenue, but decided not to do anything about the concern about that. I am a person who is concerned about the choice of traffic lights at Vine in Florida and at Race in Florida, because of the creation of another straight-through, high-speed car path through what is a very residential area, past a, past a very heavily-used park area. I'm concerned that the proposal does not have any traffic calming aspects to it. I, like, I think Deborah mentioned the possibility of roundabout, I think the Race and Florida intersection is a primary place where Urbana could take this not very advanced technology that's being used elsewhere, even, even in advanced states like Indiana, to manage traffic in a, in a more safe-for-vehicles, for-people, and-for-bicycles manner. And so I'm just concerned that this, this project has been designed, what I will call by warrants, which is like the national, how you design car, roads for cars manual, how I look at it. And so I urge our community to pay attention to this and give feedback to it, and make sure we end up with an improved Florida Avenue corridor, which we need very badly, that that's, that's a space that needs attention, but that it recognizes what's needed for both vehicles, and for people, and for bicycles. So thank you.
Any other Council comments? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Wilken.
Thank you. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I would like to move for approval Resolution Number 2022-06-057R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan.
Is there a second? Moved by Grace, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Grace?
Thank you. I just want to say that I, you know, acknowledge that this is a really big, complex plan, and a lot of necessary maintenance and repairs and future building, and I hope that we can take in some of the ideas we've talked about with more minority women, veteran-owned businesses in our construction selection, so I look forward to more conversations on that, and also some of the new projects as they come up with each individual project, like Florida Avenue and the fire stations, and I look forward to some of the designs and this being a big continued process. Thank you.
Any other Council comments? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion carries. Go ahead, Grace.
Thanks, out of the sync of things. Next, I move for approval ordinance 2022-06-025, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 23 budget.
Second. Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Did you have any updates on that? Any further?
Nothing further than what Ally just mentioned.
Discussion. Chris?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget in the therefore with a section for saying the following: "Any new technology, programs, or positions associated with the Police Department requires consultation with the public and approval of the City Council for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023."
Second. Could you state that again, please? I missed a part of it. Could you restate that, please?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah. "Any new technology, programs, or positions associated with the Police Department requires consultation with the public and approval of the City Council for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023."
Okay. So that was moved by Chris Evans, seconded by Grace. Discussion of this amendment? Mary Alice?
So this won't come as a surprise to Chris, because I had an opportunity to talk with him today. Any new positions that aren't already in the budget automatically come to City Council. So there's really three things here. They're talking about programs, talking about technology, and talking about positions. So I really think positions don't belong here at all, because we already have to go through it. In terms of any programs and any technologies is really broad. It's a very broad category, it can mean a lot of different things. And I think that if, if this is of the desire of City Council to have a conversation about new technology and new programs, I don't think it belongs in the budget amendment. I think it belongs in a resolution. Chris and I had a conversation about what does that new technology look like? So one of the examples was facial recognition technology. And I think that we can quite easily craft something that talks about basically personal obtrusiveness into people's lives, I think is, is part of our conversation that we had, technology such as facial recognition technology. There can be other technologies that somebody could feel that was obtrusive into their lives. So, so my argument against this amendment is to basically say that we need to be much more explicit so that we know, both the City Council and the staff and the public, know what we're talking about. To have something as broad as saying "all technology" and "all positions," it just, it's not feasible. So my, my ask to the City Council would be that we, we do not approve this amendment, and that we move forward with potentially crafting a resolution that would address some of the concerns that have been raised. Those are my comments.
James?
Yeah, I'm going to echo a little bit of what Mary Alice said. I, I think this amendment is too broad, and maybe does not belong in, in the budget, per se. If, I don't know what this is about. I think it, it's very unusual to put this kind of constraint on a, on an operation that we need to be able to function, that we need to be able to have work within its budget. I would like, perhaps, Chris, have some concerns if technology that might intrude on people's privacy, like the robust discussion we had about LPRs, that was, I think that was a valuable conversation to have at City Council. I would be supportive of, as Mary Alice suggests, a resolution that kind of focuses this on the things that we have concerns, that need that kind of maybe broader attention brought to it. But I, but I, I think it, as it's stated, is, is too general, and doesn't necessarily belong in the budget, is redundant for the personnel standpoint, because we would have a chance to work on that. And I, I suspect that for the program standpoint, if it involves a significant amount of money, which is the thing that I would be concerned about, a major shift in funding towards a program that wasn't on our radar as we're approving this, that is something I would like to look at and talk about. But I would, I would, I think I would prefer, as Mary Alice suggests, that that be in a resolution that tries to give a little bit stronger guidance to what needs to come here, and if, you know, the Police Department finds a new gadget that would be useful going forward, that is small-scale, that, having, having, requiring that to come before us, because it's new technology, I think that's, I think that's too, too general.
Yeah, just background. So here was what I was thinking about regarding technologies, is that, like, things like drones, thermal imaging, license plate readers, robots with cameras or guns, facial recognition software, armored vehicles, machine guns, security cameras, helicopters and aircraft, shot spotters, personal tracking devices, social media monitor, monitoring, and voice recognition tech. My thinking on programs was the co-responder model, SROs, the DARE program, intelligence-led policing, traffic strategies, prioritizing drug enforcement, controlled drug buys, de-escalation, predictive policing, dedicated squads or task forces like Swats and Drug Control Units, gang databases, and connections with ICE. So that was what I was thinking. My intention is simply this, to have our Urbana Police Department be as transparent and upright with the, the public and the Council. I do not want to get into the day-to-day investigative work that they do, I just want to know if you're going to do drug control buys, that that's your policy, and I just, you know, that the public and the Council is aware that you're employing programs like that. I don't want to know what address and where you're going to do it and all that. So that's my intention, is simply to keep our Police Department, the trend that we've had over the last couple of years is more and more transparency, that's great, and I was just trying to put it in language, I mean, in a, you know, short budgetary amendment, just, you know, a simple sentence, and maybe it is too, you know, James, I think you're right, it might be too vague. Mary Alice, you know, cautioned me on it this afternoon, and we had a good talk, so I'm open to, you know, whatever adjustments are better, but that's my intent, was just simply continue to have a good Police Department that is transparent.
Thank you. So my thoughts on this, I wanted to recap for us some of the things that happened last year after passing the budget and in some of that process. There was a memo for this, memo for discussion on procedures related to action items by Council. This was October 18th, I believe, and there's this written memo in that materials. There was a section added that "No resources, monetary or otherwise, related to this or any part of the fiscal year 21-22 budget shall be applied to alternative response models, including co-responder models, without a public hearing and consultation with the Council." This memo refers to some issues in that process, that that language was added in the non-binding part of the ordinance and not the binding one, which was not the intention of at least some members of Council. And then there was also the issue of what consultation meant in private meetings individually, and not a discussion and vote on the Council floor. So there were quite a few issues, and in the end, we were not allowed to vote on this follow-up co-responder model. And I think the issue with that is it doesn't just exclude the Council, is it excludes the public from this process. And I think that that is part of the issue, and why I am in support of this language, just to take some things that we learned from last year. I think it's not unprecedented, unreasonable. I think that if it's already set up this way, that it would be redundant, because new programs, new positions, new technology would already have to come to Council for approval, then I don't see why it would be a problem. I'm still not clear on an understanding and answer on when or what needs to come before Council. So I do have concerns that some months from now, we could have a, an update, not even a vote, where it says maybe, you know, license plate readers, drones, facial recognition, whatever, is already in a police technology budget, and so that's why they have the right to purchase that, without including a review from the public and input from Council. So that's some of the concerns that I have, because this has happened before, just last year. It's not, my motivation is not to stop or vote no necessarily to any of these potentially new technologies, programs, or positions. My motivation is to include the public through Council on this process, and possibly make improvements, and have more community engagement. I think when things come to the floor, the public understands them better, and a lot of times, we do come up with ideas that I think adds to whatever proposals in front of us. This would apply to, my understanding, the way Chris read it and wrote it, is that this would be only new technology programs or positions, not any existing programs that are carrying on, or replacement of an existing position or technology, that this is exclusively for new programs or positions. It's, for me, it's not a motivation of mistrust of the Police Department necessarily. I think it's, I think it's a reasonable, what do I call it, skepticism maybe, from events that have occurred last year. And so that's why I think it would be important to just have it in writing, and if there may be comments that this is, you know, late in the game to bring it up, I think my response to that is that, I did bring up concerns and questions about this last week in emails to staff and in the public meeting, said I had concerns about this particular issue. We did have language like this last year, so I think it's not unprecedented, or unreasonable, or unheard of. And I also would say that if it's too late to change anything tonight, then why are we having a public hearing on the budget tonight? If it's too late to make any changes, then maybe we should have this public hearing further in advance. So that's my rationale for any comments that it might be too late in the game to add something like this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jaya?
Thank you. So I've, I've put a lot of thought into this, because, you know, in viewing this amendment, I had the question in my mind, is this necessary, and if so, why? Right? There's, that answer we received is in terms of major variations, that it would come in front of Council, but I could not help but reflect on what happened last year. I will spare the rereading of what was put into the ordinance last year, but the intent with that was to encourage more of an opportunity for community engagement and for Council to provide guidance, as our, our Police Department is working on the important role they have, and part of that is building community with our residents. That decision was meant to be interactive, was supposed to involve the committee, I mean, sorry, the Council and the community. Unfortunately, this was not the Police Department's decision, but that decision was taken out of the Council's hands by including it as a whereas and therefore non-binding section of the budget ordinance from last year. So when I reflect on, is this necessary? I can't help but look at what happened last year when we asked for increased involvement, and the fact that that choice was taken away from the public and taken away from the Council. That included not only the development of a new program, which was justified because it didn't require new funding, but also the creation of a new position. And while we're saying that new positions have to come to Council, that was not the case in that situation, because it was a reallocation of funding, rather than the creation of a new position. I also think it's important to note that part of what builds that strong relationship between law enforcement and the community is increased opportunities for interaction. I think even though it was challenging in a lot of ways, the town halls around ALPRs, those opportunities for the community to weigh in were essential to make sure that the public is part of informing any decisions that we are making. So while I would like to say this is not necessary, I worry that what we have found, and there were concerns that were raised in terms of access from the community, in terms of information about decisions that are being made, those existed prior to the appointment of this current Council, right? That is, it's not something that happened just last year. But in trying to address that issue, one piece of that issue last year, that choice was taken away from the community and the Council. So unfortunately, I feel that this amendment is necessary to continue to advocate for that transparency and those opportunities that our law enforcement officers, our Police Department also deserve to know what kind of response they're getting from the community, what kind of response they're getting from this Council. So as I said, I think unfortunately, our very short history has already proven there is a need for something like this.
Any other comments? Anyone who hasn't spoken?
No.
Sharice, did you want to say anything? You don't have to, just checking. Not Mary Alice? Okay, Mary Alice?
All right. So I, I hear my fellow Councilmembers frustration with some of the process of last year, and, and what I'm going to say to that is, is that the interaction and the lack of clarity, I think, is one of the things that arose from that, right? So an assumption was made by- an assumption was made by staff that what the council was attempting to do was not the same. They weren't on the same page in terms of what was the expectation. Putting language that is this broad will give even fewer clarity. This will stop anything from, from changing. It's, even the word program isn't defined. And we can, we can sit here and have a conversation about what is a program. Programs frankly, in budgets are actually account codes. So I, I think that, I think that all of these concerns that everybody's raising, the desire to have an interaction between the community, council and the police department are great, I think, but we need to be very clear on what that looks like. And we can't do that in a budget. I, I don't think that we can do that at this, at this point. And to have something like this is, is frankly, it's going to make things more stagnant. Because what will end up happening, in my opinion, is that people won't want to change anything because they don't want to go through the process. I'd rather have us working with the community and the police department and council and staff where we get a better system set up for our community. And the way to do that is to really think through some of these processes that we have concerns with, make a good guideline in terms of how we want that to be, and make it separate. But it's not a budget thing. I mean, I went through all of the different amounts of money that we have in terms of contractual services, in terms of, you know, miscellaneous things. There's no wiggle room in this budget. We're talking $3,000 for equipment. I mean, you, you can't buy technology for that amount of money. So really, if we're going to be buying new computer software to the degree that I think Chris is intending here, it's going to come to council. There is no money in the budget for us to spend $20,000 on facial recognition. It just doesn't exist. It's not here. So I really strongly encourage my fellow council members to not approve this amendment and to work together towards a resolution that really gets at the heart of what you're trying to achieve. That's my piece.
Sharice.
I'm going to piggyback with Mary Alice on this because the simple fact of the matter is that we amend the budget throughout the year anyway regarding whatever issues come up because it's, it's all has to be fluid, period. And once you put something in language that, in, in, in writing, using absolutes like any, and it kind of closes off things and it, it, it puts us all in adversarial positions. This isn't a chess game. And so I, if in fact I were to go along with any, and I'm using an absolute there myself, type of language regarding this, I do want better definitions. I want more detail. I want to know in regard of what kind of situations you might be talking about, that this type of positions, tech or programs might be used, or I would like to know more. I would like you to be more defined in what you say with your language. And it's nothing against you, Chris, because you do, you do your research, I know that. But at the same time, what it does is, is, is your, your, what, what it seems like is that we are cutting off our noses despite our face. And we put our law enforcement people in a position where they will be like horse and buggy compared to everybody else. And I, I, you know, things that could be helpful in, in enforcing or in just even finding people that, that, that do harm to others could also be put in a situation where that just never happens. And just everything seems so adversarial. And I don't think it needs to be. I think just, it just needs to be better defined.
Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Sure. The chair recognizes the mayor.
I want to comment on process and then address the language of the amendment. First of all, let's talk about transparency. Just so the public understands, the budget ordinance was passed out of committee last week. There were no changes proposed, no amendments proposed. This proposed amendment was sent to some people yesterday morning, Sunday morning. It was sent to members of the city council, it was sent to the finance director, to the city administrator, to the city attorney. It was not sent to me and it was not sent to the chief of police. We were not included in this. So I didn't learn about this amendment, this proposal until this morning. The language is broad, it's vague. No one understands what you mean by this. And has been pointed out, there are multiple definitions for the words you used in here. Programs, in our budget process, and that's what we're talking about here tonight, a program is a cost center. That may not be what you intended, but that's one definition commonly understood and commonly used when it comes to budgets. Consultation with the public, what does that mean? What does it mean? There is no definition. New technologies, it's, that's very broad. That can be an update or a change in software. We, we're, we're replacing the ARM software with new updated software. So our database is changing. That is so broad and so vague that it's paralyzing. So it doesn't get at what you actually want it to get at. And this is the type of discussion in terms of transparency that should not take place at the last minute as we're on the verge of having to pass this budget. And I'd remind people, we have a June 30th deadline to pass a budget. July 1st, if we don't have a budget in place, we are not authorized to spend money. That's the fact, what we're dealing with. We're not like the state of Illinois who can go for years without a budget. We have to have a budget passed. So this is more, this discussion is something that can take place separately in a resolution where you can clearly define terms, where everybody can be included in the discussion. And I hear what people are saying about the co-responder model. That was an instance where we thought we were doing and consulting with the council. It's what we used to do and how we used to do it. And it's unfortunate, it was not understood that way. But using one, one example to, to justify this very broad and vague language is just not going to work. And think about all the other times we did do exactly what you're talking about wanting. The case of the body worn cameras, that was a vote that was taken in the previous council. That was very transparent. Ten shared principles, that was a public, community engagement-based activity. The use of force policy, we spent nine months working with the community to revise our use of force. And it reflected the resolution and the desire to emphasize de-escalation, which was passed by the previous council. The ALPR discussion, yes, it came to the council in the form of a budget amendment because that's what it was. So on the agenda in October of 2021, there was a agenda item and it was, it was, it was on the agenda as a budget amendment. In the packet, in that agenda, it, the memo clearly stated this was for license plate reader technology. There was a presentation that night, discussion ensued. That was followed by weeks and weeks of engagement, including two town halls, a very public process. The de-escalation training, members of the community last week, I think it was last week, losing track of time, last week attended a, a presentation by the people doing de-escalation training for the police department. The school resource officer, another very transparent process. We have, we are doing, and when I had a conversation with Chris this morning, he said to me, we just want you to keep doing what you've already been doing. You don't need to use a, an amendment like this. And I don't understand the broad, broad strokes in this approach here. I've also asked legal to weigh in in terms of legal sufficiency. I will say that this amendment was drafted, to my knowledge, without any consultation with staff or city legal. Even though, Chris, you had a meeting with city legal last week where you were invited to come in and consult, once you had some proposed language, you did not do that. So I would ask city attorney to weigh in on that as well.
Would you like the chair back, Mayor?
I would like the chair back. Thank you.
Okay. I'll relinquish the chair.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and, you know, some of my commentary is obviously going to be a little bit similar to what you've kind of alluded to. So I, I guess I'll touch on the frustration, I think, from what had occurred in the previous year with this idea. As I tail into my meeting with council member Evans on the idea of how to assist the council in, in achieving, you know, its thoughts or, or goals, I guess, in this area. When that kind of came to the fore, at least in, in my involvement, it was kind of down the road a little bit. It was like, hey, I need you to look at this because in this ordinance, it says this particular thing and we think that, you know, the, the city is moving in a direction that's in, opposite to that. And so that's where I ended up explaining, of course, the difference between the preamble and the body of the ordinance. And so if at that time, the intent was to have that be a legislative policy decision in terms of expenditure of money, certainly understand that. But I don't recall any follow-up to the idea of, okay, and it may have been, again, at that point, almost, you know, literally a little bit, you know, too likely to kind of walk through that, to go back and reformulate that as its own kind of standalone legislative policy, if you will, and the idea of how do we want money being spent? Hey, we don't want it spent on this. Okay. Here though, obviously we're at the stage, which I assume is, is why council member Evans is, is broaching this topic, is we're kind of at that stage right now where we're talking about establishing the budget going forward. And so the question talks about the idea of just establishing that kind of policy. And so in my meeting with council member Evans, what I had suggested was have no problem trying to assist in getting something put together that is sufficient, and I'm going to say sufficient in a couple of different ways. Legally sufficient is the format, structure of either the resolution or ordinance to make sure, hey, we're, we're following that kind of legal aspect of accomplishing what you're after. But here, I'll touch on it in this sense too, because I think there is a little bit of a concern in terms of sufficient for the staff. Because what I think you want to have in place is something that has force and effect, which has the staff understand what it is rather than be completely confused or not sure about what it is that we're, would fit into these categories or, you know, what will be triggered by this particular provision. And so that's where we talk about this, is a separate kind of resolution to establish this legislative policy is just to drive it to that, which is, appreciate council member Evans kind of describing your list, you know, of all these things, certainly understand that. All that will be fleshed out. And I think part of what we want to have too is, you know, and end up conversation with all the people that should be at the table. It's council, it's administration, honestly, it's, it's finance as well in terms of not wanting to inadvertently impact what is already in place for the city, which is the ordinances and policies that talk about the idea of either hiring personnel or procurement of things or stuff relative to what maybe this is really driven to. If we use the facial recognition software, I guess maybe as an idea. Okay, we understand that's completely new. The concept is, hey, we want to talk about that before we step down the path of even considering, you know, actually getting some. But as the mayor pointed out, and, and from the email too, I started making some notes on here myself, which is, you know, when you say any new technology, let's say software that's being utilized by the police firm right now goes down and the company that's done it doesn't do anymore. They won't maintain it. We've seen this happen before where companies go out of business and now the software is just unavailable completely. But it's something they actually have to have in order to actually perform their functions and duties, is if I have to go to a new company to get some software to accomplish this, does that fit that particular category? Right. And that's what I would have guessed. It's probably not where your intention is, but if you're looking at it from the staff perspective, is I'm now going to be unsure what I'm supposed to do about that. And to touch on the consultation with the public too then, is similar, is I'm not really sure what that means on the idea of that. Should we go out and have a town hall meeting? Is it just literally bringing it to council, which has public input, it's on the agenda and we have some receipt of public input to that at point? Is that, you know, your consultation with the public and where do we kind of land with that? And so, you know, for these kinds of things, if you think about it, at least in my mind, your budget, budget ordinance is really driven to the idea of putting money in line items to fund the operation of the city. And then that's kind of where you're at. If you want to talk about the idea of, is there are particular things that, you know what, we just don't want to spend money in this way? To me, that's a kind of a standalone concept of, you need to establish this. It touches on the budget because again, you're talking about how you want to spend money or not spend money. But when you talk about these kinds of issues, to me, they're standalone resolutions to council member Wu's point, standalone resolution to establish this is what the council wants to see as you operate within the budget that we've adopted. And so I do think there's some benefit to the idea of that, which is why in my meeting with council member Evans, I suggested, you know, I, I don't know anybody's mind, of course, and what's helpful to me, and I do this with staff, is, and this is not to put work on other people, but to, can you do the legwork a little bit on the idea of putting together the background? All right? The preambles and the whereas clauses and some examples are the idea of what's happened before that's triggering what we're about to do. You know, again, I'm somewhat fresh still. You know, and some of the background for these things, I'm not going to really understand or know, right? It's easier for the people who have lived it for a while to kind of start at least putting it, lining it out, putting it together. Then you can kind of come, we can kind of sit down and look at this. And how do we frame this out to get to our final result draft of resolution ordinance, however you want to call this, to come back to council for discussion, debate, you know, and, and vote. And so that's where I am suggesting this kind of piece is not so much a budget of putting numbers and, and funds into line items. It's a different overarching policy decision on this is what we want to see happen in the city.
Chris.
Yeah. So again, to further explain how this came about, I, I was thinking about all the, these long lists of definitions of what technology and programs means, but because of the lateness of the hour, I wanted to keep the, the budget amendment short and to the point. And I will acknowledge that it is open to too much vague. I mean, consultation with the public, I was imagining town halls and opportunities to talk at council, but I didn't write it all in there. And all, you know, to write all these particular technologies and programs, I just thought it would be too cumbersome and I was just trying to be simple and understandable. Maybe that's not the way you do things, but that's what I did, so.
Jaya.
I, I hear and acknowledge that, that, yes, receiving this yesterday, the timing is not great. It would be important and meaningful to have those further definitions. But I also think it's important to review some of what actually happened last year. So yes, we're pulling out the co-responder model as an example, but that's for good reason. Chandra and I worked on drafting very specific language and what should be included in that, in that. I think we were very clear about what the intent was with that. I know if people look back at the public record, I expressed very clearly my concerns with, with what was being proposed and why. When we wrote that draft, and we can, you know, look in my emails, I was just reviewing it, and I hate to, to call individual staff members out, but Elizabeth Hannan is who said, we'll put it in the whereas clause. At no point was it explained to me that what that, what the implications of that were. I take ownership for that. I was a new council member, probably should have asked more questions. The change to consultation was Carol Mitten's language. These changes, I understand where, where there can be issues with language because I've lived it, right? We gave very clear guidance on what the expectations were last year. And again, I can't help but come back to, this is why we're asking for increased involvement from the council and the community because even when we have been very clear, we haven't received the information that we've requested. In terms of the other component of last year's addition, it also included the allocation of finances to go towards a review of public safety needs through the lens of racial equity and social justice. Heard nothing about that until eventually through repeated requests for information, we were told, we don't know what that means, we don't know what you want. So if there are those moments where clarification is needed, I totally understand that things can be interpreted differently and that additional language can be added in. But I, I think that where this is coming from is not a place of trying to micromanage. And I don't want to speak for, for Chris, but that was my understanding for the conversation. But because of that commitment, for taking that step back and saying, what are the public safety needs of our community? We still haven't seen significant movement on that project, right? The initial effort, we didn't end up with qualified applicants, but there's been no additional movement that I am aware of as someone who was supposed to be reviewing those applications since that time. So now we're a year out and we have seen no progress in one piece of what was included in the amendment last year and the other was removed or put in in a way that was not actually enforceable despite the clear guidance from the council. So I think it is important to So I think it is important to kind of have that context as we're talking about why this proposal is being put forward in terms of changing the budget. I think, again, if it's something that's the day-to-day, you know, even if it's putting that into the, you know, the agendas, we often don't receive information about some of these major changes that we've been talking about that have been used as examples of transparency, right? Saying like, oh, here's your presentation, expect to vote on that next week. That's not the same as having community have the opportunity to actually weigh in on something that's a really important aspect of their safety as well. So I think that, you know, yes, there have been moments of transparency, but there have also been moments where information was omitted or not accurately presented to council. So I will say, even though I am very impressed with the leadership I've seen from our police department, I really appreciate the ways that we are seeing our officers engage with the council and the public. I think giving increased opportunities for that to occur is still important.
Grace.
Thank you. First, say that I really appreciate the conversation and the openness to be able to discuss this. And I echo some of what Jayo was saying about last year's, because, you know, talking about the language consultation not being clear, that was the language that was suggested by staff and approved by legal last year, was consultation with council. So if that's not clear enough, I think there's an issue that that's what we used last year to communicate with council. I think with the public, you know, we can change it to more specific and say, public hearing, sure. So I think that I really appreciate the input on that and I would be in support of making it more specific, especially with some of the points that people brought up. Because those are some of my questions, is if or how this would impact daily operations, as has been stated. Like what new technology would happen without approval? We had the example of a software, I think that makes sense. Again, that would be replacement of an existing technology. We went through that with arms versus whatever to the other weird acronym one. And that's an existing technology that's being replaced or updated, as opposed to a whole new type of thing. So I'm definitely open to hear how that would impact, if any. And I think that more specific language would be okay. Just, you know, and something for Chris to consider, since you're moving the amendment, is, you know, if people were down for an opportunity to add more specifics, maybe like any new surveillance or investigative technology, such as some of the examples listed, and specify what new programs or new positions would mean, I think I would be down for finding more specific language that would be more clear and more helpful. And also if other staff or leadership have answers to the questions or inputs on what we could do specifically to improve the language.
Sharice.
Okay, I'm just going to say this. It is my opinion that this is definitely something that we should be talking about aside from everything else, based on the simple fact that we have nobody here representing law enforcement. That's number one, to even discuss this. And for us to make decisions regarding law enforcement is like a comparative to me of the insurance nurse deciding what your treatment is going to be when you have major surgery or something. Because I don't, I can't speak to what everybody may encounter from one day to the next, day-to-day operations, or new software, or computer stuff, or whatever. And frankly, I think that there should be a say somewhere coming from that side of the room if, in fact, we're making these kinds of decisions for them. So, or even talking about making these kinds of decisions for them. So I would prefer that we vote on what we're supposed to be voting on and we can have another time when they can show up and maybe even be more telling to us about what Chris's amendment may entail.
Carol.
Thank you. I appreciate what everyone's trying to accomplish. And I think that even in your own conversation among councilmembers, you're trying to tease out more of what's intended. And you all are having that opportunity to talk among yourselves about it. But I think it would benefit, as Sharice was just saying, from, I mean, we haven't had, as staff, we haven't had 24 hours with this proposal. And the police are not, I mean, they're here in the back, but they're not represented by leadership. And I think for us to make sure that we understand and that you understand maybe how this could be interpreted in a variety of ways, and you could say, oh, no, we didn't mean that, but there's no opportunity for the dialogue to occur when this is happening, you know, so quickly and without a lot of advance notice. I think we would all welcome the opportunity to flesh it out more, because, I mean, you, I don't want, I don't want to put, I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think fundamentally what happened with the CCRT, you all might not agree with this, but I think it was fundamentally a misunderstanding about intent. And you all may disagree about that, but we're about to, we're about to repeat that with this broad language. Because as somebody who is going to have to attempt to implement it, I don't fully understand what it means. And there's been pieces of it that have been sort of expressed about the personnel issue, about what's a program and, you know, have a list or whatever, but we don't have a list. And I think we would benefit from just continuing the discussion. We're not, we're not opposed to having a binding resolution. And I'll say for myself, you can attribute whatever motivations you want to me, I'll speak for myself. We tried, in spite of the fact that the CCRT language was in the whereas clause and therefore non-binding, we tried to meet the intent. We missed the mark, obviously, because you all disagree. But it wasn't the question of whether it was binding, it was a question of, we didn't, we did not have the same sense of what we were required to do. And I'm going to say right now, I think in this amendment, that same lack of understanding on both sides exists. So that's my piece from the staff perspective.
Mary Alice.
Could I make an amendment to the amendment?
Go ahead, go ahead, Chandra. Then we'll go to Mary Alice.
Is, if this budget is adopted, there's an opportunity for a budget amendment, correct, to put in this new language? Is that an opportunity?
This wouldn't be a budget amendment, it would be a binding resolution.
Is there an opportunity to do that later?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and Chris, you have the opportunity now to amend your amendment to try to flesh out something more specific, or you can wait for later.
Go ahead, Mary Alice.
I wanted to amend the amendment that we take the language that Chris has proposed and move it to a resolution so that we have an opportunity to clearly articulate the intent of what we mean by new programs and new technology and new positions. So that's, that is, I don't know if it's an amendment to an amendment or a new amendment.
What do I do, clerk?
That would be an amendment to your motion, and in order for her to do that, you would have to agree to let her do that.
Yeah, it sounds to me like you're proposing we divide the question. And it's not, because we haven't voted on the amendment, it's not part of the question, we can't divide it yet.
Okay, so we're left back to whether...
I'm going to suggest that we amend the amendment, that we move your language to a resolution, to a future resolution that we work on in July. We'll put a timeline on it. And we flesh out all of these details so that we can get it closer to right.
Do you accept that?
Jay has better hands.
Yeah, I would accept that.
I would, if you want to go ahead and talk to Jay, but I have something to say, too.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to let Chris answer that. I think that that approach, I think, is appropriate, right? It gives that opportunity to actually flesh out these details. I will say, and I welcome anyone to, again, review the video recording of what I said related to the coresponder last year. I think it's very clear what my intent was. I think the communication that Chandra and I shared after that point was very clear. However, I agree that this particular language is unclear. And I think setting it as a clear priority for the new fiscal year and making sure that there's representation from the police department makes a lot of sense to me.
So I would want a resolution drafted in the near future. And I would help to do that.
My suggestion is that you withdraw your amendment with the commitment of the seven people here that we're going to work on that resolution to address your concerns at our next COW or a COW in July.
Okay, so I'm going to move to withdraw my amendment for now. I mean, withdraw it, period.
Do we need a second on that, or that's just withdrawn?
Whoever seconded his amendment needs to approve as well. And I think that was Grace, yeah.
Yes, that was me. May I comment? May I be recognized?
Will you support the withdrawal?
It's a part of that. I, my answer is, it sounds like, I want to understand what I'm agreeing to first, is that we are making a commitment as council, and it sounds like staff and executives see no immediate issue or reason why we couldn't continue this, to have a binding resolution that we will come up with in a timely manner, meaning COW meeting in July when possible, and that there would be assistance for us to draft a binding resolution in the spirit of this concern and this issue. And that that would be binding and effective for this fiscal year. Is that correct? Okay, so I would be, I'm being asked to revoke my second for the amendment tonight in place of having it be an independent resolution in a timely manner, if that's everyone's understanding. Okay, okay, then my answer is, yes, I will revoke my second in lieu of this discussion. Thank you.
Okay. So we are back to the original motion? On the budget, okay. So that, just to remind folks, that's an ordinance adopting the fiscal year '23 budget. It was moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion on that. Grace.
Thank you. I still had my question from the amendment one, I wasn't sure if that was the right time. On the updates that we got on the memo for today, I was just wondering if you could give us a little more background about the holiday pay, that's a contractual obligation of almost $400,000. And so my understanding with that is that it's in the bargaining negotiations, is that the contractual obligation?
Yes, those are all contractual obligations.
Through the union contract is the contract.
Correct, and, well, through the fire and police contracts, they each have holiday pay as part of our obligation. The calculation is different.
Okay, and so that's a routine thing that is just out of their individual budget items or the general fund? I guess my question is kind of what line item that's under? And if it has anything to do with the ARPA standard allowance for employee pay?
No, it's completely unrelated to the ARPA standard allowance. It's probably in probably five different line items, because it's budgeted for each program where the staff are. It was just something that fell through the cracks. So there's kind of, when we're working on the budget, there's line items that departments are budgeting. And all the personnel budgeting happens in finance because it's very complicated. And so I think that just kind of slipped through the middle and just didn't get included, so.
Diane.
Thank you. Mary Alice.
Grace, I just want to let you know it's on page 70. I brought this up to Elizabeth last week, and page 69, there's just absolutely nothing for holiday pay. So you can see what was, the estimate was spent for police patrols, $187,000 last year. And for police support services, sorry, police criminal investigation, holiday pay estimate was $1,100, et cetera. You can go through those. So it's right under salary and benefits, and there's absolutely nothing that's there for those pages.
If you look in the exhibit, there's actually four different line items. And each one off to the right says add holiday pay budget.
Thank you. So then, so you're saying that it was blank on this printed version we have, and now it's been updated to be corrected as it should be?
Correct. The budget book you have is the proposed budget. These are the changes we're making prior to adoption. And then probably in August, we'll have a final version of the budget ready for publication that includes all these changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Coisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2022-06-024.
I'll move for approval, that ordinance, 2022-06-024, an ordinance amending the fiscal year '22 budget.
I'll second. Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Elizabeth, did you have additional information to present?
Ally's just going to quickly run through some additional changes.
So we made a couple of additions and changes to the fiscal year '23 budget. I would like to go over the significant changes. First is the holiday pay, so for police and fire departments. So this was inadvertently left out of the fiscal year '23 budget. So we are adding $394,604 to the fiscal year '23 budget related to holiday pay. And then second, city attorney salary and benefits, we are moving a total of $164,870 to legal services to pay for contracted services. And then to the fiscal year '22 budget, we are removing $250,000 for the replacement of meters in the parking fund, since we are replacing that, or that will occur in fiscal year '23, which is already included in the budget. And I think those are the major changes that we have updated. So we are happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for finance? Grace.
I have questions about, I think, just the '23 budget. I didn't know if we were taking these together, or which ones are we discussing now?
The motion on the floor right now is for the '22 budget.
Okay, then I will hold my questions for '23 budget. Thank you.
Any other questions for the '22 budget? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, on behalf of committee the whole, I would like to move for approval, ordinance number 2022-06-027, an ordinance approving a special use permit at Tatman Towing at 810 and 1,002 Perkins Road, Plan Case 2447 SU22.
I'll second. Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Further discussion? Mary Alice.
So just to kind of give an update, I'm the one who brought up the whole sewer and water drainage and so forth. You know, Tim did email me and said that he wasn't able to be here today, he didn't really have an update for me. Going through the criteria that we have to use for the special use permit, I mean, I think that this is, this plan does, I think, meet those criteria. One of my concerns that Tim brought up was that gravel and cement are treated as the same in terms of porousness. And to a layperson, that is not correct. I don't know to an engineering person. That more has to go with our city code and how we look at them. I don't know how that is created. It is something that I would like to investigate a little bit more. I actually don't think... I actually don't think, looking over this pretty carefully, that the...that there will be an additional issue with water drainage, simply because you have the vacant lot right next door, which is what abuts the condo group. So I'm not too concerned about that. I don't like the procedure that we have where we count the gravel as the same as the cement because putting in more cement definitely decreases the amount of drainage that can go into the ground, and it creates runoff. So that's my concern. I will support this just because it does meet the criteria for a special use permit. Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate you looking into that more. What I thought I heard Tim saying last week is that it's because the city code already considers them both as impervious, and so changing from gravel to cement, it was already considered impervious in the first place and talked about the compaction and things. So I definitely understand, but I didn't know if that answered it, or there were still things you want to explore beyond that.
Mary Alice.
So it treats it as impervious, so it doesn't need an additional consideration, right? So if you put...if you replace gravel with cement, you're making it more impervious. But what our code says, it's the same, so therefore it doesn't need additional consideration. That's my concern, is that I think that you will have more drainage with gravel than you will with cement. So you should look at it, basically, in a nutshell, with my non-engineering degree.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of special committees, there isn't any, and reports of officers.
I had a few things. If I can find my paper. The...well, the...as I think many...well, certainly the council members know, we've been having trouble with our website. We had an update that was pushed sometime last week, and it did not go well. And so we are still trying...we thought that the administrator had put us back to a date last week, and that all we had lost was the things that had been posted since, and we found out it's much more extensive than that. So this is still a work in progress, and I just want people to be aware of that. I've gotten some phone calls. I think other people have gotten phone calls about people looking for something. So if people want to call, and we can send it to you through an email, we'd be happy to do that in this interim time. And I also just want to give the council a heads up that our plan is the second meeting in July, which I believe is July 11th. Our plan is to bring the first round of updates on the mayor council goals, so we're going to be doing quarterly updates. And so we will send everything to you. And we have standardized forms that we're using. We'll send that all in the packet, and then we'll give us a summary at the meeting and take questions then. So that's our tentative plan is on July 11th. Thank you.
And I would just add, the budget you just passed does contain funds to begin the replacement of our website, which has been my goal for the past five years. So that will be probably at least a year in the making, but we'll get started. All right, we'll move on to new business. First item is board and commission reappointments. These were included in your packet, including with information about each of the reappointments. If you would like me to go over individually, I will do so. I will just summarize Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. This is for the term ending June 30th to 2025. Audrey Ishi and Susan Jones. Civilian Police Review Board, term ending June 30th, 2025. Tony Allegretti, Anthony Rice. Community Development Commission, ending June 30th, 2025. Chris Diana. Design Review Board, ending June 30th, 2025. Travis Scheis. Human Relations Commission for the same term. Stacy Burnett. Plan Commission, Lou Hopkins, Debra McFarland for the same term. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to...for approval for the reappointments for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, for the Civilian Police Review Board, for the Community Development Commission, for the Design Review Board, for Human Relations Commission, and Plan Commission.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chris.
Discussion? Grace.
Thanks. I just wanted to say thank you for this information on the commissioners. It's...I think it's great to hear from them themselves and have a little bit of an idea, if it's individuals who I maybe haven't had a chance to interact with as much. So I appreciate that information, and also just wanted to repeat that I welcome any additional communication or collaboration with our BANA boards and commissions. I think it's great that volunteers, you know, volunteer their time and expertise to these commissions, and I know that they do important work, and I would look forward to any more communication that we can have with them, or any roles we can possibly utilize them in to take the burden off of some of these things when we do have groups of experts ready to volunteer their times in service to the city. So thanks again for this, and I look forward to working with the commissions even more.
Any other comments? Chandra.
Yes, I appreciate people volunteering to serve on these boards and commissions. I know sometimes it's tough to get people, so I appreciate people who are sticking on the commissions. There were some, like, community concerns brought up about the CPRB, and so I'm just...I'm curious, well, I hope that, you know, given the tumultuous term they had before, hoping things smooth out and hoping for a lot more, I guess, cooperation between the board, community, as well as the Police Department when they do reviews, so.
Any other comments? Good, we have a motion by Sharice, a seconded by Chris. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is ordinance 2022-06-028, an ordinance approving a major variance, which is a freestanding sign at 1111 West Kenyon Road, ZBA case number ZBA 2022 MAJ-03.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you all. So this is a request by Benson Signs and Graphics on behalf of Vital Skin Dermatology for a major variance to allow a 10-foot-tall freestanding sign at 1111 West Kenyon Road in the B3 General Business Zoning District. Table 9-1 of the Urbana zoning ordinance would allow a maximum height of eight feet for a freestanding sign located eight feet from the public right-of-way, so a major variance is required in this case as it's a more than 15% deviation from sign height requirements. Staff have received no public input on this case after sending out letters to 27 neighboring properties, posting an ad in the News Gazette, and posting a sign in front of the property. On June 15th, zoning board of appeals voted unanimously to forward the proposed major variance to city council with a recommendation of approval conditional on general conformance with the submitted sign plan. The sign plan is Exhibit C in the staff report. Staff concur with the recommendation, finding all criteria for a variance met, based primarily on the presence of an atypically large right-of-way, which is owned by Illinois Department of Transportation, bordering the property to the north on its only frontage. This is a location map where you can see the nine-and-a-half-acre parcel on the south side of Kenyon Road between North Lincoln Avenue and Federal Drive, just south of I-74. It's been the site of Vital Skin since 2020, when they received a special use permit to operate a clinic at the location. The north half of the parcel contains the existing building and parking, and the south half of the property is currently undeveloped grass and wooded area. North of the property, you can see the IDOT right-of-way. It's a large grassy strip. There are about 94 feet between the north property line and Kenyon Road, which makes it a significantly larger right-of-way than typically a butts of property. Here's an image of that right-of-way as seen from Kenyon Road. The right-of-way is the reason this variance is being requested, as its presence would make any sign on the property considerably farther from the street than is typical for a sign on a B3 business. And I should also note that Illinois Department of Transportation currently has no plans for use of the right-of-way, and it's been there basically as is since it was established, along with I-74 back in the mid-20th century. This is an image from a sign plan provided by the applicant showing the proposed sign. The sign would be 45 square feet in area and 10 feet in height, and would be situated on top of separate addressing and directional signage. The zoning ordinance allows a maximum area of 50 feet for a freestanding sign on a single frontage property in the B3 district, which the proposed sign would be in compliance with. The sign would be located eight feet from the right-of-way, but 102 feet from Kenyon Road. For signs eight to 15 feet from the public right-of-way, a maximum height of eight feet is allowed, so the sign would be two feet higher than the required maximum. For signs more than 15 feet from the public right-of-way, a maximum height of 16 feet would be allowed, but you can see in this diagram that...where the proposed sign, which is the red part of the diagram, where it's set any further back, it would be in the property access drive. So the zoning ordinance requires that variance be based on criteria specified in the zoning ordinance, with the minimum threshold being whether there are special circumstances or practical difficulties with reference to the parcel in carrying out the strict application of the zoning ordinance. Staff find that all criteria have been met in this case. Details on staff findings for each of the criteria can be found in the staff report, but the principal justification, again, is that the allowed sign height would be compensating for the presence of the atypically large right-of-way on the property's only frontage, an uncommon circumstance that's basically specific to this location. And then a quick note on fitting in with the neighborhood character. These are signs on the adjacent property to the east, which are actually taller than the sign that's been proposed and closer to the actual road, if not the right-of-way. These signs are both 16 feet in height, 15 feet from the right-of-way, but 30 feet from Kenyon Road. Again, ZBA has unanimously voted to recommend approval of the variance, with the condition that the sign generally conforms with the submitted site plans. Staff agree with this recommendation, and in line with it have prepared an ordinance approving the variance with the specified condition. City council has the options of either approving the ordinance, approving the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or denying the ordinance. I believe the applicant is in attendance tonight, otherwise I can answer any questions for staff. Thank you.
Any technical questions? Chris?
Not so technical, just curious. Who's making the sign?
It's Benson Signs and Graphics.
Grace.
Thank you. I appreciate the information in here. I think it's laid out well and pretty inclusive. I had a question out of curiosity about IDOT owning the right-of-way. Just wondering, is that because it's a major thoroughfare, or does IDOT set or own all right-of-ways?
My understanding is that it was part of whatever highway planning for the area. The property is just south of I-74, went into that. So basically, there's about 300 feet north of the property, including the right-of-way, and then I-74, and then some space north of I-74 that's all just been owned by Illinois Department of Transportation for several decades.
Is it a correct understanding, though, like, in a lot of our, you know, residential or business areas, the city owns the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay, this is an exception, that IDOT owns it because with that major thoroughfare, probably?
Yes.
Thank you. And then another, just random small question out of curiosity, on the blueprint by the sign, does it...I can't make out if this says, like, salt fence, silt fence? Something about a fence in the diagram, but it looks like there was no fence. I was just, out of curiosity, if this was a future plan, or if...I can't read that well because it's so small?
I did not note that part specifically in preparing the staff report, but that might be something the applicants could speak to. It seems like it might be a fence that would be between the parking facilities and the right-of-way, as well as the fence.
I think we may have an answer behind us, behind you.
I think the plan that you're seeing is actually a construction plan, and the silt fence is what is used during construction so dirt doesn't wash away during construction. So I believe that's what that plan reflects. There's no separate fencing planned for it all in the property.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. I think that was all the questions. Thank you.
Sharice.
I just was, you know, Grace asked that question about, it's a frontage road. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but yeah, there's a couple of frontage roads on...by the freeway. There's St. Anthony's Drive, which is south, going south of the highway on the other side. And then there's Kenyon Road, which is what they're talking about here. Kenyon Road is a business area, basically, an industrial kind of area. So Vital Skin is there. Right off of Kenyon Road also is the Holiday Inn, Campus Inc., FedEx. I'm trying to think of what else. So you know what I'm talking about? So yeah, it's just an area. So that's probably what...probably is what he was saying, why IDOT has that right-of-way, because all of that seems to be in the highway area. So even those particular frontage roads.
So we need to get a motion on the floor? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-06-028, an ordinance approving a major variance, freestanding sign at 1111 West Kenyon Road, ZBA case number ZBA-2022-MAJ-03.
A second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jayah. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. One announcement, next week, Monday, we'll be celebrating July 4th, so the city council meeting will be on Tuesday, July 5th. And note further business before this body? Yeah, Committee of the Whole meeting will be on July 5th. We are adjourned.